Welcome to the Town Election and Planning Commission. This is our normal monthly meeting being held at Town Hall at 8:00 AM Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. This meeting is being broadcast live. A recording of this meeting will be aired on Town's Information Channel 1301 several times during the week and will be available for viewing on the Town's website. My name is Frank Berry, the Vice Chairman of the Town of Election and Planning Commission. Other Planning Commission Presidents are...
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feig.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning, I'm Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, I'm Brett Poole, Town Administrator.
Good morning, I'm Ron Williams, Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this new day. Thank you for these changing times and the new seasons with the cooler temperatures. Be with this body as we plan the future of the town and be with those who protect us in our law enforcement and our armed services every day to allow us to be free and do what we do every day. In the name of prayer, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which I stand, one nation, united in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Meeting is called to order. First item is deletions to the agenda. Next is approving of the minutes.
Making a motion to approve the minutes?
Jarrett's motion.
Second.
Jamie's second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. unanimous. There's no public presentation. No old business, new business. So we're gonna move into new business, Mr. Hanson. First item is a sketch plan approval for a revision and expansion of Parker Street Common Subdivision.
Good morning.
Good morning.
When was the last time we were all in the same room together?
A month ago.
That's mine. I wasn't here.
It's your fault.
Been a long time. First item on the agenda is a sketch plan approval for a patio home and town home subdivision to be located in 100 block of Parker Street. This is a revision to a plan that was approved last year in November. The original approval consisted of 100 town homes on 12 and a half acres. Since then, Mr. Steelman has revised the project to include 99 units on 15 and a half acres. The new project eliminates some of the town homes and replaces them with freestanding zero lot line homes. It'll now consist of 32 zero lot lines, homes and 67 town homes. I had 57 in the write-up. Density, the allowable density of residential development is determined by the classification of the road that provides access to the property. Parker Street is classified as a local road which allows up to eight units per acre for town home projects and six units per acre for zero lot line projects. The proposed development will have 6.4 units per acre. Properties with PR2 zoning do not have a minimum lot size as long as the homes can meet the setback and driveway requirements. The project exceeds the minimum setback requirements with different setbacks proposed for the different style units. 20-foot front and rear yard setbacks are proposed for front-loaded units. Rear-loaded units will have a 15-foot front setback and a 25-foot rear setback. Zero lot line units will have six-foot setbacks on one side and no setback on the other uniformly spaced through the block that they're on. According to the plan, adequate driveway parking is provided for each unit. But in addition to that, the project will also include 49 overflow parking spaces scattered throughout the subdivision. Town's land development ordinance requires at least 15% of the area to be dedicated, open space with at least 50% of the open space being active recreation space for zero lot line projects. Using this calculation, the project needs 2.3 acres of open space with at least 1.1 acres of active open space. The project will have 4.94 acres of open space with 1.97 acres of that being active open space. It's unclear if these calculations include the water, the required water quality basin or some of the area around it. The project includes a pool and cabana as well as two outdoor fire pits for community use. Plan shows sidewalks on both sides of the street and spaces reserved for the town to install the Gibson Pond Walking Trail. Access to the development will be attained through a single entrance on Parker Street. Previous approval included improvements to the intersection of Parker Street and Schwartz Road as indicated by the traffic impact study. Mr. Steelman may be able to give a little bit more detail on that, but my understanding is due to DOT requirements, these improvements are no longer feasible. However, previously agreed upon improvements to the intersection of Parker Street and Southlake Drive remain in the proposal. All in all, I think staff's feeling on this project is it's a better project than what you previously approved. However, when discussing this with the Transportation Director, who's unfortunately not here this morning, some considerations for the commission may be that in lieu of the improvements to Schwartz Road, the commission may want to consider a requirement to include sidewalks on Parker Street as well as installation and dedication of the Gibson Road, Gibson Pond Walkway. Both of these items will increase pedestrian mobility in the area. Additionally, the commission should discuss planned clearing along the pond. It's unclear as to what the proposal is for clearing, but the walking trail is currently designed to protect as much of the tree canopy as possible and mass grading of this site could impact that goal. And finally, I will say that the previous approval was done prior to impact fees, being adopted by Town Council, and staff's position is that all of these units will have to pay impact fees. Some of those may be some surprises for Mr. Steelman. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it, but...
Any questions for me? Number one, it looks like a reduction in number of lots by about 10.
Went from 100 to 1.
Number two, reduced by one unit, went from 100 to 99. Okay. I just have a couple, Kevin, real quick. The island area where the pool is at, are those rear, it looks like those are gonna be rear alley-fed.
Correct.
Garage's.
Yeah, all the units on the interior of the road network has an alley. They're all, so all the units in the middle there would be alley-fed. The perimeter units would be front-loaded.
Two-car garage?
Yes.
And we still have the two parking spaces, or three, John, for the town homes that's still being...
The required parking for a residential unit, yes. It's up to three spaces for three units, three-bedroom units, three or above. I think garages are counted in that space requirement.
And you said that there was no improvements, or improvements for DOT were not feasible, correct?
I haven't been involved in those discussions, but that's the information that I have is...
Lighten us on that.
Yeah, yeah, so basically when we left here, I guess, we were, we agreed that we would put in a right-turn lane at Parker Street and Six and that we would modify the intersection of Parker and Schwartz. If you've ever driven that area, it's kind of an awkward alignment. If you feel like on Parker, you should be able to just keep going, but the stop is on Parker. So we were, we'd worked with Randy on a concept to kind of let Parker have the through movement and that put the stop on Schwartz and re-stripe all of that. And that works on two dimensions, but when you get in the field, there's a super elevation on Schwartz and, so just from a, once you consider topography, it just didn't work. And DOT just said, "We're not gonna let you do it." So at that point, we kind of hit a roadblock and so we couldn't do any improvements on that end. We're still doing the right-turn lane improvements on the other end. The other thing that we did was Randy asked us if we could provide some assistance on Highway Six by doing some survey work and design of a left-turn lane. DOT was in the process of resurfacing, I think, from the bridge all the way up to the railroad track basically on Highway Six. They already had a resurfacing project scheduled and so we went out and surveyed and helped Randy with a design that would, by adding, I think it's 18 inches of asphalt to the width, DOT can go ahead and building left-turn lane as part of that resurfacing project off of Six onto Parker, which would dramatically improve the conditions there. So we ended up doing a lot more work than we thought we'd signed up for, but ultimately I think Randy has gotten that through and the DOT is moving forward with that project based on the designs that we provided. So I think we assisted in fixing the Highway Six intersection here in the intermediate that we've already done and then we'll be turning, adding a right-turn lane off of Parker onto Six, which should help that intersection that much more. So that's what we've done on the traffic. The other thing we did, the reason for the change is we purchased another three and a half or almost four acres of contiguous property, so I don't know if you picked up on that. The reason for the change really is we added more acreage and that was something that both John and Randy encouraged us to look at because it didn't make sense because that property has got a flood plan running through it and it was really not of much value to the owner except being accessed from our side. So we incorporated that additional acreage. Our first thought was to just do more town homes and max the density out, but then as we got into it, we decided that it would feel better and just really be a better project if we brought the density down some and added a mixture of uses. So, you know, that's what we did. And then we also decided I wasn't gonna come back with a revision and not have a pool, so we converted our park and pickleball court into a pool and pavilion area and then we added some outdoor gathering spaces that'll be able to take advantage of the Town's Park and Mill Pond, which is coming back, it appears.
Right. Alright.
And as for clearing, I think if you look at everything that we've shown as open space, we would not plan to do any grading or clearing outside of the lot areas other than any minor transitional grading to, you know, connect the grade. So our plan would be to leave all of those open spaces as natural as we can. And I do know that the pond area itself was excluded from our open space calculations.
Do I got any questions?
I do. Are there gonna be sidewalks on Parker? Have we talked about that?
We have looked at that. If you've ridden down Parker Street, the challenge with doing that is there's the roadside ditches and topography and on paper, again, two dimensions, it looks like a pretty easy deal, but I think it would be very, very, A, costly and B, difficult to accomplish, you know, putting the sidewalks through, along Parker Street. I mean, we're certainly willing to go explore it, but I think it would be a very expensive proposition. Probably could involve relocating utilities. I don't know exactly which side of the road, water or sewers on there, but to create, to keep the drainage that's there and create a sidewalk, I think it would be a difficult proposition.
John, are there currently sidewalks on Parker anywhere?
No, I don't believe so. The previous approval required Mr. Steelman to grade the Parker Street side of the project so that it would make it easier for sidewalks to be put in in the future.
Yeah, we discussed...
But not actually put the sidewalk.
Right, we discussed that so it could kind of connect it to the Town towards the amphitheater direction.
Yeah, and we're providing, we've left like a 15 or, I don't know if it's 15 or 20 feet of buffer between the rear lot line of our property and the right-of-way for Parker Street. Our intentions for that area would have been to just leave it wooded and natural. Theoretically, you could clear a swath through there for sidewalk, that would be outside of the road right-of-way.
What about landscaping behind those if you don't put the sidewalk in?
Well, we certainly intend to dress up our entire road frontage with landscaping, either enhancing the existing vegetation or just if there's a gap in the vegetation, we would just completely plant it. But our idea would be that that whole frontage on Parker Street, that we would improve it from an aesthetic standpoint to make it feel like you've arrived somewhere.
Steelman, excuse me, I have a question as it relates to the intersection at Schwartz that you mentioned and that DOT was not willing to work with you all. What exactly, excuse me, what exactly will happen with that intersection with this development? Will it remain as it is today?
It'll remain as it is. I think our traffic study, I think part of the issue is when we did our traffic counts and our study and provided it to DOT, DOT doesn't perceive it to be the problem. They perceive the intersection at Six and Parker to be the issue with, I guess, quality of service, level of service in that area. And so they, they just were unwilling to allow us to change that intersection. I don't know the ins and outs of why they, how they reached that decision. I just know our transportation engineer worked with them very closely and tried to sell our position, but it just, they just weren't buying it.
It seems to be a little bit of an unsafe intersection today and I just am concerned about the increased vehicle capacity here and what that will mean.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think our transportation engineer studied all the current traffic patterns and I don't know, it's hard to say whether the people leaving our community will exit and go right to Six or if they'll exit and go left to One. It just, I guess, kind of depends on where they're going. So I don't know what volume of our trips that get generated actually will go through that intersection, but it's in the traffic study. I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head.
Wasn't there some improvements the DOT was gonna do to Six and Gibson and Randy's not here?
So Six and Gibson has met their warrant for a signal and that is in the, in the hopper, if you will, for DOT. So all the pre-work has been done and it literally is just waiting for its turn to go out to bid and then a signal will be installed at that location, which the Town will ultimately take responsibility for once they've taken over. So that may be what you meant about those improvements.
Remember, there were some improvements that they were looking at.
Yeah, and it also is in the vision plan as a future project, as, so is the Schwartz-Parker Road. So with Mr. Steelman not making the improvements because he's unable to through DOT, but paying into the impact fee for traffic improvements, he will be paying towards, maybe not that improvement in particular because it may not be the next most important improvement, but he will be paying for significant traffic improvement.
That is one thing. It makes sense to me that, you know, we're coming back for a new approval and now the impact fee is there. We get the privilege of paying those, so, you know, we certainly don't dispute that. Just have to take that into consideration, but I think with the Gibson improvement and with the turn lane improvement of Six on the Parker Street, I think all of that area will see a significant improvement in traffic flow.
Mr. Hanson made a statement, it's unclear about the calculations of the required water quality basin. You want to address that?
Yeah, the pond is not included in the open space calculations. It's hatched, because it's shown in white and the open spaces are a hatched area, it's kind of hard to see on eight and a half by 11, but on a full-size plan, you can kind of tell the differentiation in the hatch, but the pond was excluded.
One thing I want to say is in the consideration, John and his staff had said in lieu of the improvements of the Schwartz Road intersection, the commission may want to consider requirements of sidewalks on Parker as well as the insulation and dedication of the Gibson Pond Walkway along the perimeter of the project.
Is that a question?
Yes.
He's already addressed the Parker Street sidewalk.
Yeah, so we've already addressed that, so...
Yeah, I think along the...
Because the, our thinking is that the pathway, greenway that will connect is gonna benefit your community as well as the Town.
Yeah, I don't dispute that. We're excited that it's going to be there. We're dedicating the land to the Town at no cost already. I think, I don't know what materials or the Town is planning for that walk. I just, to me, it feels like a blank check to me, which I can't write on that, but, you know, we certainly could go in and do site preparation on that trail, which would be clearing, subject to you defining how much clearing you want to allow for the path and then, you know, kind of getting it on grade. It seems like the path was, the route of the path was somewhat chosen so that there would be minimum grading required, I believe, but, you know, I don't know that to be the case, but I think we could certainly do that.
Okay. Want to add to that, Mr. Hanson?
No, sir, I don't.
Do we happen to know what material we're gonna use?
I think it's concrete.
It's gonna be hard surface. I don't know if it's been determined if it's gonna be concrete or asphalt and that may be a market decision at the time of the bid, but it will be a hard surface for the areas that are hard surface. Some of it will be raised and that will be, you know, wood or some sort of similar product, but the actual trail part that's on the ground will be a hard surface of one form or another based on market prices, I believe.
Is that project in the impact fee pool of projects or is that funded separately prior to the impact fee?
Yeah, it's funded through the TIF, the Downtown TIF Program, which is the same funding source for the amphitheater. So those were two projects approved at the same time and not part of the impact fee.
Is our property in that TIF district?
I believe so, but I'm not 100% sure of that. I'd have to check. It was mostly the commercial in the downtown area and it did include some of the area around the pond, but I couldn't say for certain that it did. But obviously, that's a change in taxable value over time and not a fee that you would have paid, so there's no, there's no payment by you or really anybody else because it's just an increment of the increase in taxable value, not a fee in and of itself. It's essentially just a budget mechanism for the revenue generated by any property inside the TIF.
Understood. I just, if it benefited the Town in any way for, if we could apply to be part of the TIF or if that's too late, I just didn't know if we were already in it or...
Yeah, I'll have to check on that, but as far as application, it is possible, but extremely unlikely to modify the borders of the TIF because TIFs are agreements between multiple jurisdictions.
Right.
In this case, the school district and the county as well as all other taxable authorities in the area, so like Midlands Tech and things like that. And to include a single project in the parcel or in that area would be Herculean effort that isn't gonna happen, to be quite frank.
Right, well, and this property, just for what it's worth, is owned currently by nonprofits, so there's currently no tax paid on the property. So, you know, once we take title to it, that will trigger a new revenue base for, I guess, all of those entities you just named.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I gotta, I think that, I'm gonna give my opinion, you can tell me if you want to amend it or not, but I think that in the consideration that John gave us of the, along the pond, being that drastic improvements aren't gonna be required on Parker Street is something we need to consider. So this is my opinion.
To include the future of a walkway?
Yes.
I'll amend my motion for that.
Jarrett's?
I'll second.
We already had a motion and a second. Who seconded?
Sorry?
Did you second the first motion?
Yes.
Okay, so you're okay with the...
Yes.
Alright. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Next item is annexing Lexington County Tax Map 342001013, John.
I just want to clarify the previous motion, just to make sure we have it straight at staff level. You've approved the project without consideration to Schwartz and Parker Street, but adding the walking trail along the pond and not, and without any consideration on sidewalk for Parker Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, alright. I just want to make sure we're all clear. And the information I just received is that property is not part of the TIF.
Got to that. Should change anything.
The Settlers' Point Homeowners Association owns a parcel located on Chapman Court and has petition to annex the property. Neighborhood boat ramp is located on the site. Property's in town near this one or is owned protected residential and Chapman Court is currently not classified. Due to surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is protected residential and the recommended classification of Chapman Court is RL6.
I'm assuming that the boat ramp is still gonna be maintained by the Homeowners' Association?
We are only bringing it into the Town. We are not proposing to maintain it or...
Make sure that was clear. You don't need to be in the boat ramp maintenance business. Alright. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number three, annex in Lexington County Tax Map 430004110, John.
John Michael Pierce owns a parcel located at 511 Cherokee Trail and has petition to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Property's in town near this one or is owned protected residential two and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. Due to surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is protected residential and the recommended classification of Cherokee Trail is a local road.
I just want to make one statement about this. This property does have some livestock on it, some roosters, so how that affects with the Town ordinance. I have no problem with annexing it, just want that to be known.
If it's annexed into Town, it will be subject to the Town's ordinance, ordinance requirements. Those types of issues are usually done on a complaint-based basis.
Okay. Alright. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Unanimous. That concludes all of our new business. Got any other business, John?
Um, got to tell you, at the work session, November seventeenth, which is the Tuesday night before what would be your regular November meeting, we're going to have a work session to discuss this project we're working on with redevelopment, rewriting the land development ordinances and the zoning ordinances. I haven't completely firmed up that date, but if you don't mind penciling that in on your calendar, because we'll need y'all's participation. And the remaining training sessions, for those of you that still need to get your three hours, are on November the twentieth and December the eighteenth.
All right. No public comments. Mr. Williams, good you were here this morning.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate y'all volunteering your time to serve the town. I've got a few announcements for you. On October the twenty-eighth, the Mayor's Prayer Luncheon will be at the Bloodfish Stadium at eleven-thirty a.m. Tickets for ten dollars and can be purchased, I believe, online from Bloodfish, or their office. November the first will be a Veterans Day Parade at three p.m. Ring makeup day for that is November the eighth. November sixteenth to the seventeenth, there is going to be a community blood drive here at Town Hall from ten to three, ten a.m. to three p.m. Performments are suggested for that blood drive. Donors get a Carolina Clemson blood drive tee-shirt, a five-dollar Amazon gift card, and the blood is tested for COVID-19 antibodies. So, those of you that want to come out and participate again, that's November sixteenth to seventeenth here at Town Hall. And then December the fourth through the sixth will be our snowball festival again. Still working on plans for that and trying to narrow down how that's going to look this year, but you want to put that on your calendar for something that's upcoming. Also, I think some of y'all have probably seen on Facebook, pray for the Greenfield County community. They lost an officer yesterday.
All right. Thanks, sir. Brett, I didn't mean to jump over you. Sorry about that.
I don't have anything. We do have an upcoming traffic committee meeting, but other than, which we haven't had for the last few months with COVID, but other than that...
And that's in our normal spot, correct?
No, that's going to be in the large conference room on the first floor of the Conference Center, so everybody can spread out a little bit.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything for good of the town or this commission? Here none, all. Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
This meeting will now, oh, I'm sorry, wrong page. Thank you for watching the Town of Lexington Planning Commission action. This meeting will be held at Town, was held at Town Hall at eight a.m. Wednesday, October twenty-first, twenty-twenty. A video of this meeting will be aired several times during the week on the Town's Information Channel thirteen oh-one, and it can be viewed on the Town's website. I am Frank Berry, your Vice Chairman, and on behalf of the Town Planning Commission, I wish you a good day.